I'd like to welcome you all to the regular meeting of the Glen County Mainland Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. I'd like to remind you all to please silence your cell phones. And we will start the meeting with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. If you would like to participate, please join us.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, Lord, in our grace, Lord, let me thank you so much for this wonderful day. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to meet. We pray, God, that you give us wisdom and discernment, that we make decisions important to our community. And, Lord, that our heart is that you be glorified. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is, tonight, we do have a public hearing, so I'd like to remind everybody of the meeting procedures. Public comments will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, or the maximum of five minutes allotted to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesman, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then proceed or provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chair will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Do we have any Planning Commission announcements?
Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager, good evening. The only thing I wanted to, I'll let you all, or remind you about, is this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM is the kickoff public meeting for the zoning code update. So this will be at 6:00 PM Thursday at the Brunswick Library. So they're newly renovated conference rooms. So the conference rooms A and B is where we'll have that, and it'll run until 8:00 PM. So from 6:00 to 8:00, we will start with a presentation, that'll start right around 6:00 or shortly after, and then there will be a public engagement activity that will take place as well during that time period. So you're welcome to be there, and please spread the word over the next couple of days, and we hope to see a great turnout that evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Our first order of business will be to approve the minutes of our meeting on April 2nd, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the minutes for the meeting of April 2nd, 2019. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Our first, first agenda item will be a public hearing, zoning code application, ZM 4017, excuse me, 5111 Blythe Island Highway rezone. Property address is 5111 Blythe Island Highway. Parcel ID is a portion of 03-04778, Lot 1, 1.23 acres. It's currently split zoned, highway commercial and one-family residential. The proposed zoning is highway commercial. Glen County Board of Commissioners, sponsored by Commissioner Wayne Neal, applicant.
Thank you. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 4017, and this is 5111 Blythe Island Highway. And this parcel is 0304778. And I will let you know, there was a change to the GIS system, really just in the past few days regarding this parcel. This, this property is a separate Lot 1. That was part of a subdivision that was done in the late 90s. But because there were, there was the same ownership for three parcels, there were, I'm sorry, for three lots, there were three zoning lots that were merged under one tax parcel, which is very commonly done when there's same ownership, just so there's ease and, and what, you know, the owner receiving a, one tax bill for several parcels. So what I wanted to let you all know about is the parcel number has remained the same. So this parcel that we're, that you're considering tonight is still 0304778, Lot 1 of this Lake Drive subdivision. And the area of the property is 0.73 acre. But what was noticed was a 1.23 acre parcel, because I did combine all the lots. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. And the existing zoning is split highway commercial and one-family residential. The highway commercial part is on the front of the property along Blythe Island Highway, and then the rear of the property has been R9. Currently, the property is used for pine straw and firewood sales business, as well as the rear of the property is a commercial parking lot. There's currently a storage and parking of vehicles on that part of the lot. They do propose it to continue as commercial under highway commercial. And the 2018 comprehensive plan future land use map does show this as medium density residential. So what we're showing on the map, which is in your staff report, is that basically everything west of Highway 341 is shown as medium density residential, and really just along the Highway 341 corridor is what is actually shown as commercial. So here's the property. This is Blythe Island Highway right here. This is Lake Drive. And then this is the property here. And just to orient you with the surrounding zoning, highway commercial is in this front portion. And then there is highway commercial along this stretch. And on the future land use map, all of this is really shown as medium density residential, even though it all is currently in zone, zone commercial as well as in commercial use. And then really to the further west of the property, it is primarily residential. There's a church on this corner. Across the way, this is highway commercial. There is a mobile home park over here. And then also behind the property, this is R9, a single-family residential. And then this is a mobile home park residential over here. And I had mentioned about the current uses as well as the proposed uses. They do want to continue to operate the businesses that are currently on the property. And just a little bit of background about this property, there was a rezone in 1982. So all of this lot was formerly R9, one-family residential. And in 1982, the front portion of the lot, which was 18,000 square feet with 173.50 feet along Blythe Island Highway, Blythe Island Highway, and then 100 feet along Lake Drive, was rezoned from R9 to highway commercial. And at that time, there was a florist shop that was operating the building in the front of the property along Blythe Island Highway. And in order to have that flora shop be conforming with the zone, that appears from my research in the minutes, that was the reason behind doing this rezone in 1982. And that was case number GC 3182. And then in 1999, there was a portion of Lake Drive that was acquired by the county to expand the right-of-way, right-of-way on Lake Drive. And in talking with the applicant, or I'm sorry, talking with the property owner, Mr. Tostensen, his understanding in 1999 was that when the county acquired the right-of-way, at that time, the entire parcel was going to completely zone to highway commercial. So really the same process you're seeing tonight. The understanding by the owner was that in 1999, whatever was remaining as R9 was going to be rezoned to highway commercial. Our staff researched the, the minutes and looked at the applications. And we do not see that there is, we cannot see that there was ever a rezone application or any kind of process at that time. What we do see is that there was a minor plat that was done at that time, as well as the acquisition of the right-of-way by the county. But it does not look like, we cannot find any documentation that shows that there was supposed to be the, the rezone at that time, or any process that, that was followed. So this is a survey of the property. Again, just orient Blythe Island Highway and Lake Drive right here. And then this is the property, this is Lot 1. So when we talk about the different lots that were part of the original parcel, this is Lot 1. And then this was all, these were all part of a minor plat that was done in 1999. And these are residential lots back here. And these are just a few photos of the site. Initially, what brought this to our attention, there was a code enforcement action. There was a complaint about the condition of the property. And as code enforcement was taking a look at it, that's when it was determined that there was a commercial use that was going on, on the R9 portion of the property. So here's just some photos that show, this is the property here, the corner of Lake and Blythe Island. There's a church over here. So it's just the front of the property. And this is looking, looking east towards 341. And this is a view from Lake Drive. In this picture on the left of your screen, to the left is residential property. This is part of the residential lot. To the right is where some of those cars are parked. And where those cars are parked currently is the R9 portion of the lot. And this picture on the right, you can see this a little bit better. So the majority of the area where these cars are parked is the R9 property. So that, that is what would be rezoned to commercial. And just another view from Lake Drive, a little bit closer to Blythe Island Highway, is where the firewood and pine straw operation is taking place. And in, in your staff report, I, I talk a little bit about landscape buffers. Today, if an applicant was coming to the county and requesting a commercial use on the site, most of the time, they're coming through site plan because there is a building on the site. But even if there wasn't a site plan, if they were coming to us and saying, I want to do a new parking lot on this property, what we would say to them is, there is a section of the code, 613, that describes landscape buffers, and this, what you're doing would trigger the installation of landscape buffers. And so with this application, because there is going to be potentially new legal commercial uses occurring on a potentially newly zoned highway commercial piece, my recommendation to, to you all and the Board of Commissioners-
To any testimony. The Chair may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The Chair will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Do we have any Planning Commission announcements?
Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager, good evening. The only thing I wanted to, I'll let you all, or remind you about is this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM is the kickoff public meeting for the zoning code update. So this will be at 6:00 PM Thursday at the Brunswick Library. So they're newly renovated conference rooms. So the conference rooms A and B is where we'll have that and it'll run until 8:00 PM. So from 6:00 to 8:00, we will start with a presentation that'll start right around 6:00 or shortly after. And then there will be a public engagement activity that will take place as well during that time period. So you're welcome to be there and please spread the word over the next couple of days. And we hope to see a great turnout that evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Our first order of business will be to approve the minutes of our meeting on April 2nd, 2019. I'll second. We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the minutes for the meeting of April 2nd, 2019. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Our first agenda item will be a public hearing. A zoning code application. ZM 4017. Excuse me. 5111 Blythe Island Highway rezone. Property address is 5111 Blythe Island Highway. Parcel ID is a portion of 03-04778, Lot 1. 1.23 acres. It's currently split zoned highway commercial and one family residential. The proposed zoning is highway commercial. Glen County Board of Commissioners sponsored by Commissioner Wayne Neal applicant.
Thank you, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 4017 and this is 5111 Blythe Island Highway. And this parcel is 0304778. And I will let you know, there was a change to the GIS system, really just in the past few days regarding this parcel. This property is a separate Lot 1. That was part of a subdivision that was done in the late 90s. But because there were, there was the same ownership for three parcels, there were, I'm sorry, for three lots. There were three zoning lots that were merged under one tax parcel, which is very commonly done when there's same ownership. Just so there's ease and what, you know, the owner receiving a, one tax bill for several parcels. So what I wanted to let you all know about is the parcel number has remained the same. So this parcel that you're considering tonight is still 0304778, Lot 1 of this Lake Drive subdivision. And the area of the property is 0.73 acre. But what was noticed was a 1.23 acre parcel because I did combine all the lots. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. And the existing zoning is split highway commercial and one family residential. The highway commercial part is on the front of the property along Blythe Island Highway. And then the rear of the property has been R9. Currently, the property is used for pine straw and firewood sales business. As well as the rear of the property is a commercial parking lot. There's currently a storage and parking of vehicles on that part of the lot. They do propose it to continue as commercial under highway commercial. And the 2018 comprehensive plan future land use map does show this as medium density residential. So what we're showing on the map, which is in your staff report, is that basically everything west of Highway 341 is shown as medium density residential. And really just along the Highway 341 corridor is what is actually shown as commercial. So here is the property. This is Blythe Island Highway right here. This is Lake Drive. And then this is the property here. And just to orient you with the surrounding zoning, highway commercial is in this front portion. And then there is highway commercial along this stretch. And on the future land use map, all of this is really shown as medium density residential, even though it all is currently in zone commercial as well as in commercial use. And then really to the further west of the property, it is primarily residential. There's a church on this corner. Across the way, this is highway commercial. There is a mobile home park over here. And then also behind the property, this is R9, a single family residential. And then this is a mobile home park residential over here. And I had mentioned about the current uses as well as the proposed uses. They do want to continue to operate the businesses that are currently on the property. And just a little bit of background about this property. There was a rezone in 1982. So all of this lot was formerly R9, one family residential. And in 1982, the front portion of the lot, which was 18,000 square feet with 173.50 feet along Blythe Island Highway, Blythe Island Highway, and then 100 feet along Lake Drive was rezoned from R9 to highway commercial. And at that time, there was a florist shop that was operating the building in the front of the property along Blythe Island Highway. And in order to have that flora shop be conforming with the zone, that appears from my research in the minutes, that was the reason behind doing this rezon in 1982. And that was case number GC 3182. And then in 1999, there was a portion of Lake Drive that was acquired by the county to expand the right-of-way on Lake Drive. And in talking with the applicant, or I'm sorry, talking with the property owner, Mr. Tosterson, his understanding in 1999 was that when the county acquired the right-of-way, at that time, the entire parcel was going to completely zone to highway commercial. So really the same process you're seeing tonight. The understanding by the owner was that in 1999, whatever was remaining as R9 was going to be rezoned to highway commercial. Our staff researched the minutes and looked at the applications and we do not see that there is, we cannot see that there was ever a rezon application or any kind of process at that time. What we do see is that there was a minor plat that was done at that time as well as the acquisition of the right-of-way by the county. But it does not look like, we cannot find any documentation that shows that there was supposed to be the rezon at that time or any process that was followed. So this is a survey of the property. Again, just orient Blythe Island Highway and Lake Drive right here. And then this is the property, this is Lot 1. So when we talk about the different lots that were part of the original parcel, this is Lot 1. And then this was all, these were all part of a minor plat that was done in 1999. And these are residential lots back here. And these are just a few photos of the site. Initially, what brought this to our attention, there was a code enforcement action. There was a complaint about the condition of the property. And as code enforcement was taking a look at it, that's when it was determined that there was a commercial use that was going on, on the R9 portion of the property. So here's just some photos that show, this is the property here, the corner of Lake and Blythe Island. There's a church over here. So it's just the front of the property. And this is looking east towards 341. And this is a view from Lake Drive. In this picture on the left of your screen, to the left is residential property. This is part of the residential lot. To the right is where some of those cars are parked. And where those cars are parked currently is the R9 portion of the lot. And this picture on the right, you can see this a little bit better. So the majority of the area where these cars are parked is the R9 property. So that is what would be rezoned to commercial. And just another view from Lake Drive, a little bit closer to Blythe Island Highway is where the firewood and pine straw operation is taking place. And in your staff report, I talk a little bit about landscape buffers. Today, if an applicant was coming to the county and requesting a commercial use on the site, most of the time, they're coming through site plan because there is a building on the site. But even if there wasn't a site plan, if they were coming to us and saying, I want to do a new parking lot on this property, what we would say to them is, there is a section of the code 613 that describes landscape buffers. And this, what you're doing would trigger the installation of landscape buffers. And so with this application, because there is going to be potentially new legal commercial uses occurring on a potentially newly zoned highway commercial piece, my recommendation to you all and the Board of Commissioners is to require those landscape buffers to be installed on the area of the property that is the newly highway commercial property if approved. This area at the front of the property would be what we would really consider kind of grandfathered in. It's a non-conforming, non-conforming in the sense of the buffer. So the buffer ordinance, looks like we first had that adopted in 2008. So anything that's been on the site since prior to that would be basically grandfathered in. We would not go to a property today and say, even though you've been here since 2000, we're going to require a buffer. That's not something we would do. But a new use coming in today would have to conform to the buffer ordinance. So my recommendation is that along Lake Drive, because this is a public road and the site is in view of the public road, a type E landscape buffer would be required. And a type E is a buffer that's 10 feet wide and has a variety of different landscape material in it. And the idea is just to, you know, create a visual buffer between the public road and the site. On the rear of the property, as well as the eastern side of the property, because these abut, actually this buffer extends maybe a little bit lower, it really would be right here. This portion of the property, as well as this rear portion, because they abut residential property, the code requires a type, type A buffer. And there's two different type A buffers. One can be 20 feet of landscaping. So again, a mix of landscaping materials that's 20 feet wide. Or you could do a 12-foot wide buffer, but that buffer would include an opaque fence. So either solid wood fence or some kind of a landscape or masonry wall. If you do a solid wall, that screens a view, plus landscaping. And then that could only be 12 feet wide. So that, that's just a little bit of a visual to show you that recommendation. And then here are your possible motions. This is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. You can recommend approval, recommend approval with modifications or conditions. You can defer the action if you'd like additional information. Or you can recommend denial of this amendment or this zoning decision. And then this is, staff recommended motion is to approve the application with the condition that the landscape buffers are installed in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And I know Commissioner Neal, as the sponsor of this rezon request, is here tonight as well as the owner of the property, Mr. Tosterson is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, are there any questions from the staff?
I have two questions, if that's okay. Just because it, the original paperwork we saw didn't reference that it was part of a subdivision. And sometimes old subdivisions have deed restrictions that are recorded with the subdivision plat. Not necessarily covenants, but maybe a deed restriction that says it must always be residential. Do y'all check that as part of the process? I'm new to the commission, so I'm not sure if you do that.
Yeah, sure. We, typically what we would look at are the plat notes that are on the plat. If there is something that's a private covenant, that's not necessarily something we would check or have access to. So if it is a private situation, then that, we consider that more of a civil issue. If it is a requirement of the homeowners association, so we don't necessarily have access to all of those. But if it is a plat note that is on the plat, or anything else that we find in minutes or conditions of a staff report, you know, we would, we would look at those, for those files.
Okay. And then my other question is, so will, if this rezoning occurs, will both parcels become one highway commercial parcel? Or will they still be two separate parcels that can be sold and developed separately?
So. Wrong way. So what, it made it a little bit confusing because we had several parcels that were, I'm sorry, several lots that were under the same parcel. And it's used interchangeably. Our, for planning and zoning purposes, we rely on the zoning lot. So there's a legal law that's underlying a lot of these parcels. And what we see in a lot of places is there may be several zoning lots that are all combined under one tax parcel. And what we recognize is that legal underlying zoning lot. So that's the situation that is here that was a little bit confusing with the merged parcel. But, so all of the property that is subject to this zoning request tonight is Lot 1. And so Lot 1's boundary is right here. This is the existing building along Blythe Island Highway. And then like where the cars are parked are back here. So there, there is currently a house to the rear. This is a separate lot, that would be Lot 5. And then this is a vacant lot, Lot 2, over here. So I don't know if that helps to clarify a little bit, is all of this would be under a legal zoning lot, which is Lot 1.
So it would, it would be the 1.23 acres would all become one parcel zoned highway commercial?
It's actually.
The front piece and the back piece.
Yeah. So it's actually just, it's 0.73. So just recently, the GIS department split the lots back out into separate parcels. So this one retained the same parcel number, which doesn't always happen. Usually there's a reassignment. But the way this was done, they retained the same parcel. So this particular lot is 0.73 acres. 1.23 was when it was combined with two other lots. And so that's how it was originally noticed and that's why it's a little tougher to follow. So 0.73 is the size of this parcel that we're looking at tonight.
So on the pictorial, Lot 1 is 0.73 acres.
Correct. Yes, yes, sir.
Stephanie, just so the public understands, when either the, one of the commissions, either the island or the planning or ultimately the Board of Commissioners, puts conditions or restrictions on something like this, who does the follow-up? Who makes sure that? I know that all the property owners will adhere to whatever government says and, you know, there won't be any problem. But just in case they don't, who goes out and checks the boxes and does the enforcement, et cetera?
Yeah. So that would be the responsibility of our planning and zoning staff. And the way that we would document the condition in this case, because it's not a planned development that has a separate planned development tax, this is a conventional zoning, there would be a resolution that would be approved by the Board of Commissioners. And we would ensure that condition is listed in that resolution. So that would be our paper trail to follow. And that would be shown in the record about that, with that condition. And if they do, in the scenario, if they do continue to have the commercial vehicle parking lot, because that's going on now, we could immediately enforce that and, you know, suggest a timeline on when that, you know, when that landscape buffer would need to be installed. So that would be something that, you know, if there are recommendations on when that should, when that should be installed. If not, staff would work with the owner and figure out a good timeline on when those plantings should be done, if that is what occurs as a condition.
I have a question about the buffers also. I think on this rezoning, we would have to approve the buffers per the ordinance. But if there was a modification to the buffer, that would be, have to be at a site plan approval. It says commissioners may allow modification to the buffer requirements for a development during site plan review and approval under any one of the following conditions, then it goes to list. So if we were to modify it, other than the type A or type A modified, it would have to be during a site plan?
But yeah, that is how the ordinance reads, is that modification does happen during site plan. In this case, there, there would not be a site plan, at least not imminently.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Leaf.
I have a quick question. Is there a reason why the Commissioner Neal presented this instead of Mr. Tosterson?
Instead of Ms. Thompson, is that?
Instead of Mr. Tosterson.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So basically, we have kind of two different ways that we can do a zoning decision or a text amendment. So it either needs to be initiated by the Board of Commissioners or it can be initiated by the owner of the property. And if the owner of the property initiated it, they would be subject to our deadlines. There would be a fee and they would go through our process that way. When it's county initiated, it's still a similar process, but there is no fee because it's county initiated. And, but they still go through our development review team process and we still notice it accordingly. So we, the different, so we still notice adjacent property owners, our property owners with the 200 feet, we still post the site, we still do public hearing notice. So it was really just, Commissioner Neal came forward and said he was interested in sponsoring this. And so that's how it came about.
Any other questions? Would, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Would the applicant please come forward and request action?
I own the property, I'm Andrew Tosterson.
And you are requesting that we take the action as outlined in the staff report?
Yes. I, you know, you see that yellow line running up the side of that property? County engineer came to me, they want to do some work on that road. And I gave that property to the county. I didn't sell them the property. They didn't purchase that property. And they told me that they would subdivide that property any way I wanted, if I would give them that property. Because they want to do some work on that road and I owned as much or more than the road than the county did. And I gave it to them for free to do that. And that piece of property has been subdivided since you see the date on there. And I've been using it as commercial property because they told me that's what it was. Because that's what I asked them for. I mean, I never paid a penny to have that piece of property subdivided. They done it for me for giving them that road, that easement on that road there and part of the road. And there's been cars parked there before. And I've used it for commercial property and the counties give people license on it since back in the early 2000s or late 90s. And then all of a sudden, there's a problem with it. I had no idea there was a problem with it. All I want to do is get it straight. That's all I want to do. But I've been using this commercial properties since it's been subdivided and I gave the county the land.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We may call on you again. Again, this is a public hearing item. So I'd like to open the floor for public comment. All those wishing to speak in favor of the request, please step forward and state your name. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to all those opposed. Please step forward and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simon's Island. And I'm hoping I'm not the only person in this room who is willing to speak in opposition to this. When I read the agenda for this meeting late last week, I was initially moved to speak in favor of the general principle of regularizing the zoning on this. And then I read more closely. And then I went and looked at the property. And as a procedural matter, I'd like to call your attention to the fact that the Chair called for the applicant to come forward. Mr. Tosterson is not the applicant according to the document in front of you. His name does not appear on the first part of the application. The applicant is the Glen County Board of Commissioners, which is, I believe, a fairly irregular matter. Though I can understand that some on the Board of Commissioners might believe that somehow the Board of Commissioners of the county let Mr. Tosterson down. And by the way, he referred to how he gave the road to the county. He gave a part of, a section of right-of-way to the county to make it possible to have a wider road. And why should there be a wider road there? Because there's quite a bit of traffic going to the north of Blythe Island Road, going up toward the marsh and the historic canal. And there are quite a few owner occupied houses that are in good shape. And their property values, I believe, are being held down by the mess at the intersection on property owned by Mr. Tosterson. But that is separate from what is before you. I had trouble hearing the discussion on the size of a tax parcel 0304778. And the parcel ID number next to it is the words a portion of. No, that parcel, 0304778, is one entire piece of land that is 0.73 acres. Is that what you all have established? Or have you agreed that with the staff report that it's 1.23 acres? If you believe it is 1.23 acres, then I suggest you take a look at the figures on this survey, which is in your packet. Lot 1 is identified there as being 35,111 square feet. And that is about three quarters of an acre. There are a lot of problems with this. I looked at this closely. We're told that this is a re-subdivision of 1.9625 acres comprising 97,368 square feet. An acre is 43,000 square feet. You cannot get 97,000 square feet and change out of less than two acres. But that is really all beside the point. The point is that the applicant, not Mr. Tosterson, although that is what he wants, the county is saying, let's regularize this apparent mistake. And I call your attention to page four in the staff report where we are told under item five, whether the zoning decision is conformity with the policy and intent of the comprehensive land use plan. And we're told that the future land use map in the 2018 comprehensive plan envisioned Glen indicates that this property is medium density residential. The commercial land use is limited to the Highway 341 corridor on the map, on the future land use map. Staff recognizes this discrepancy. Well, good. But then the next sentence is, and the county will evaluate this when it reviews the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Well, there's a lot of reviewing of that map to do. And I think you should deny this application until some of the mistakes in this staff report are corrected and you have, or you ask some more questions. So I would not suggest deferral. I would suggest straight out denial and let the owner of this property come forward if he wants to have all of the zoning highway commercial so he can continue with an ungodly mess. He has property rights, yes, but he is creating property wrongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Hearing none, seeing none, we will close the floor to the public comment. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, looking at this, it looks like basically housekeeping, getting a, one parcel, getting the dual zoning off of it. And the, that corridor is, I don't believe, a residential corridor through there. I don't think I'd like to have a house that fronted on 340, or excuse me, 303, right there. So I don't see an issue with this at the moment. The buffers will need to be worked on for sure on this. And if we need to modify it, they'll have to come back with a site plan on it. So.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of application, ZM 4017 rezoning the entirety of Lot 1, which is 35,111 portion of parcel number 03-04778, to highway commercial with the condition that the property conforms with the landscape buffer requirements as outlined in the zoning ordinance.
I'll second that.
If I could just, sorry, if I could just make one correction because we did have that changed to the parcel number. Where am I? Let's see. I'm just going to put this on the screen real quick because it does include the correct size. There we go. Okay. So just, it has changed from 35,000. Well, it's close to that. But officially, the GIS says it's 0.73, so it's a little, little bit different.
Commissioners, did you include in your motion to include the landscape buffers, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir. So we have a motion on the floor to, we have a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, Gary, Mr. Neville. So we have a motion on the floor.
So we have a, a motion on the floor that, in a second, to approve ZM 4017. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Next item. Next item is site plan approval. SP 3961, The Chapel. Consider site plan approval for the addition of a 5,412 square feet of building space for Unit 1 on an existing church campus at 114 Harris Farm Road, parcel ID 03-02984.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to defer SP 3961 to the June 4, 2019 Mainland Planning Commission meeting.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to defer SP 3961, along with a second, to the June 4, 2019 Mainland Planning Commission meeting. Any discussion? All those, please signify, in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Last item is site plan approval, SP 3999. Satilla Grocery Site Plan Revision. The property address is 6892 New Jessup Highway, parcel ID 03-27063. 7.17 acres, currently zoned highway commercial. The applicant, Greg Lee, for Strickland Plaza LLC owner. Mr. Postal.
Mr. Chairman, Maurice Postal, Planning and Zoning Division. This is an application for a site plan approval for the construction of a new grocery store, future development and associated infrastructure on the aforementioned seven-acre parcel. The original site plan for Satilla Grocery was approved by the Planning Commission on, in November 2017. At that time, the size of the lot was around five acres. Construction didn't occur under the original site plan. And subsequent to that, the owner combined an adjoining lot with the original lot to combine the new seven-acre site. After the lot combination, the proposed location of the grocery store, parking lot, retention pond, and the entrances were shifted to the east of their original locations. And also, an area of proposed future development was added to the new site plan. And this is the location of the lot. And this is the original site plan, showing the area of development, the retention pond, and the parking lot. And this is the current site plan on the seven-acre lot. This is a photo of the front edge of the lot, showing the cleared area on the left and Sterling Plaza on the right. And this is, these are the proposed elevations for the grocery store. And staff is recommending approval of SP 3999 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Postal. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant please come forward and request action?
I'm Jonathan McDill with Roberts Engineering, representing Mr. Strickland and Mr. Lee on this project. And I'm here to request approval as presented. I'm here to answer any questions.
Wasn't, when this first came up several years ago, wasn't one of the issues the egress and ingress off of 341?
Yes, sir. That's something that's been worked out with DOT. We had to get a, we've gotten preliminary approval from the DOT for this entrance and exit.
If my memory serves me right, it was going to cost a lot of money to do what DOT wanted done originally.
It's actually expanded a little bit. For if you go back, if you were to look back at the old one, it's actually expanded a little bit. But that's correct. But in order to be compliant with their rules and get the egress and ingress that the owner has requested, that was what it had to end up looking like.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Any idea, excuse me, any idea when the future building might be put in? I guess that's going to be market-driven at this point.
I don't want to speculate or speak out of turn, but I think the hope is as soon as they can possibly get it done.
Okay. What type of future building is it? Any idea?
You want me to? So the intent, connect, the intent, so the intent is, you see that the original building is gone in this. The intent is to replace and improve. So that the future building would be the replacement of that front building.
I know that the people that live out in that area around Sterling and 341 and 99, they will certainly look forward to this grocery store being out there.
I've heard, I've heard that. And I don't think they'll be losing any barbecue by doing this.
No. Maybe that would be the future development.
I think that would, that would, that would be bad.
Put a barbecue next to it.
That's right. I think that's the intent.
Any further questions? Sir?
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 3999.
We have a motion on the floor in a second to approve SP 3999 as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? That was unanimous. Before we adjourn, I would, I guess I would ask the members of the Mainland Planning Commission that are, are members of the Bylaws Revision Committee, are there anything that we should talk about or hear at this point?
Mr. Chairman, we've had a couple of meetings with regard to the bylaws. And to the best of my knowledge, the latest message that came around, came about, my most worldly, covered most of the concerns. There has been some recent discussions that I'm curious about that maybe staff can help answer with regard to different bylaws for the mainland and, and the island. Is that something that is, is on the, on the works? Is that something we need to know about or discuss about, or?
Well, I think it's a very valid question. I think we probably all read the article in the newspaper. And I, I watched the meeting online last night. Stephanie, you were there. Can, can you answer that question? And I, I know that one of the questions posed was, could they potentially have separate meetings to approve these bylaws? Which really didn't make a lot of sense. That's not something that we're even considering, is it?
No, not, not at this point in time. So we, and that's, that is a good question because we will have some communication with you all coming up here pretty soon. As we are going to look at scheduling a joint Planning Commission meeting for both MPC and IPC. So we'll send out a doodle poll. Probably, this week's really busy with meetings. So hopefully, either by the end of this week or early next week, we'll send that out to you all and try to schedule something the next couple of weeks. Because it is one of the items that you really need to have both Planning Commissions present to talk about, are there some, some different ways you want to handle things? Or should you move forward with one set of bylaws? And there was another question that came up last night. The IPC currently has a public participation policy that is, is kind of above and beyond what our public hearing, public participation policy is in our code. So that, one of the items in there was in regard to, at joint Planning Commission meetings, those would not follow that same policy. So right now, at IPC, they do take public comment on all site plans, on all village preservation items. And they used to do it on preliminary plats and when they had purview, or when you all had a purview over those. So that was a question that came up was, should, when you have joint Planning Commission meetings, you, do you want to allow public comment at, at those? So that was something that would need to be discussed by both commissions. Even though it is in the IPC's policy, it applies to both commissions, clearly. So that's the update on that.
Because, because I guess I have a life to some degree, and I didn't watch or wish to attend the work session last night, what is the main point why they want separate bylaws for the island and the Mainland Planning Commission? I mean, the bylaws are the bylaws of the bylaws. I mean, I know the island wants to be different. But is that, you know? Or did I put you on the spot? And if I did, I apologize.
No, that's, that's quite, I mean, I, I think that's something that, that can be talked about at your commission meeting if there are. Because there may be some ideas that the IPC, you know, there are some numbers that the IPC have that, you know, potentially, the thought is that it would be different for both commissions. And maybe it is something both commissions would want to adopt and, and practice. So I think that's something that could be fleshed out more by both commissions, so.
Those are issues you think we should discuss at our, at our joint planning meeting, then?
I think, yeah, I think as far, far as you want to go with it. It was just something that came up, you know, come up at the IPC last night. So we, you know, we, I think it'd be good just to have that as an item. So in addition to the bylaws, we would also just add in about the, the participation policy. And if there's really anything else that, that you think you may want to talk about doing as, as kind of adopted policies, you know, outside of what the code and bylaws say you should do, so.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.